It is Monday, October 3rd, 2022, and the time is 5:30 PM. This regular meeting of the Mesquite ISD Board of Trustees is called to order. A quorum is present, and notice of the meeting has been posted for the time and manner required by law. At this time, the board will move into a closed meeting under authority of Texas Government Code, Section 551.082, for a Level 4 grievance hearing of Ms. Christina Kennedy, Section 551.071 for consultation with the board's attorney, and Section 551.074 under personnel. No formal action will be taken in the closed meeting. Good evening. The time is 6:25 PM, Monday, October 3rd, 2022, and the Mesquite ISD Board of Trustees will now reconvene in open meeting. We'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. We're glad you're here. Tonight, we have with us Mike Pettitt, who is a pastor of Connection Point Church, that will give our invocation. And following that, we have a group of students from Kimball Elementary, and their sponsor, Stacy Sheffield, is here with us as well. So we invite you, if you'd like, to please stand for our invocation and the pledges of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, your wisdom, your support in this meeting. Lord, I thank you for each school board member and the time they sacrifice for this district. I pray that you would bless them and everyone who is involved. Lord, and I thank you for each person who is in attendance today, their concern for the children of this school district. Lord, I pray that the discussion will be meaningful today. Fill us with your grace, Lord, as decisions are made that affect the students, the staff, and the faculty of the Mesquite School District. Continue to remind us that all we do here today, all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth and for the children being served by the district. Breathe life into the ideas and decisions, and give us all the inspiration to be the best that we can be. Lord, I pray that this district will continue to be a shining example of your goodness in this city. Lord, we thank you, and we pray in the name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
Ms. Sheffield, if the students would like to, we welcome them to introduce themselves.
My name is Diala, and I'm from 4th grade in Kimball Elementary.
My name is Sparrow, and I am in 5th grade at Kimball Elementary.
My name's Noel Lonnie, and I'm in 5th grade from Kimball Elementary.
My name is Juniper, and I'm in 3rd grade from Kimball Elementary.
My name is Trinity, and I'm in 3rd grade from Kimball Elementary.
My name is Astina, and I'm in 3rd grade from Kimball.
Y'all did a great job. Thank you so much. Next on our agenda is our board moment. Do we have anyone here from PTA? Come forward, please. Welcome.
Hello. Good evening. I'm Emily Buchanan, your council president for Mesquite ISD this year. This year, we are pushing membership to build our numbers for everybody. It's very important to join the PTA, especially if you're a junior or senior in high school. We offer scholarships at the end of the year for seniors that are members of PTA. We have Rally Day coming up this year. If you're not a member, you can't go. So if you want to go to Rally Day, make sure to get that membership in, and as well as our Reflections program. You have to be a member to do any entries into Reflections. Right now, we're sitting about 1,400 members for Mesquite ISD. I know we can do better. I know we had a rough start with joinPTA.org being down, and I would really like to push it. If you're not a member, go to joinPTA.org and become a member. We also have a new school in our district that is, has a PTA, Vanguard. Their PTA was formed this year, and they are $7. If you have not joined them, please join them. And overall, I believe that is all I have for you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Board, anybody have anything to add?
I do, Mr. President. You know, November 8th is just around the corner. It's time to make a plans to vote so we can ensure our voices about public education are heard. Together, we can stand up and show our support for Texas public education, especially at this crucial time. Voting is the single most important way to ensure Texas will have pro-public education legislators who fight to support teacher compensation, school safety, student educator mental health, and other public education priorities. But first things first, if you're not registered to vote, you have till October 11th to get online or go get the paperwork to sign up and register for the vote that's coming up. So I would encourage everybody to get out and vote November 8th. This is a critical time for public education in Texas.
Just want to echo that this November election is going to be very critical for public education. You can go out to most of the voter websites and get the records of our state reps and legislature and their record on public education, if they're for public education or not. And I would ask you to just do that prior to your vote.
Thank you, Mr. Bingham. Anybody else? Kevin?
Just a quick note. I wanted to reiterate, we went to the summer conference for Tassie Tasby, and a lot of things happened, but most important, we had a speaker there, and I want to talk about this lady, Ms. Valentine, who spoke to us on Sunday, which I wish she would have been there, our speaker, on Friday when everybody was there. And it was very interesting. It was a, she talked about perseverance, and she talked about kindness. This is a lady that, she went through some tragedy in her life. She lost her limbs. And to see her presenting, you wouldn't know that. I mean, she was walking the stage. She was, she was actually running a PowerPoint. And she talked about, you know, she could have just sat in her bed and moped and stayed there the rest of her life, or she could persevere and become something. She was a school principal, and she is still a school principal, and she runs her schools like, well, to put it this way, she was Principal of the Year in her school district. She was Principal of the Year for the state of Louisiana, and then she was top 5 in the nation for Principal of the Year. That's how much perseverance she showed. And she, she wanted to share a message of kindness, which is what we talk to our leadership about in our schools. She talked about some issues like, you know, that some kids have and how those, those relationships worked, because she really cared. And I think that was a great presentation, and maybe in the future, we could have her speak, I don't know. But it's somebody that we should all really listen to and hear about and try to emulate in one way or another. I think it was very interesting. I wanted to bring that story back to the school district, because I was, I was impressed. I know it was a little sad to hear her story. I think Robert cried, but I don't know. No, but it's such a good message that we should all remember that. Persevere and, and do the best we can for our kids.
The message was extremely inspirational, even though we weren't able to attend worship service on Sunday morning because we were at the convention. Her story was a good sermon. So thank you, Kevin, for bringing that up. Anybody else? Next on the agenda, I should have mentioned this earlier. I'm sorry that I did not. Tia Collier, one of our members, her work has taken her out of town tonight. That's the reason that Tia is not here, so we look forward to her being back. Next item on the agenda is a student and staff guest. Ms. Jobe?
Recognizing our newest members of the Apple Corps this evening. First is Carrie Delaney from Potteet High School, and I believe we have a video to introduce her to you.
Carrie Delaney is Potteet Strong. Carrie is Potteet legacy. Her years of working at Potteet shows that her love and passion for students is unmatched. She not only educates the child, but she also is sponsors of many clubs and organizations. She's also our wellness rep. She makes sure that the health and mental wellness of our teachers and staff is important, and we are so thankful and we are so proud of Carrie Delaney, our Apple Corps winner.
I got into teaching because I wanted to coach basketball and other sports, but teaching actually became the number one priority. And I believe, especially in the subjects that I teach, which are technology and business, that it's really important for the kids to prepare themselves for the next step in life. And I feel that that is my first and foremost job, is to prepare them for their next step. Anybody who gets out in the world had a teacher that influenced them in some form or fashion, whether it was actually from class material or just life lessons that they said or presented in the classroom.
Come on up here. You've got something to read. There's two pages. Don't worry. I'm going to read the proclamation. Oh, come on. That's yours, that's yours too. Stay ready. I got to read this. Proclamation. Whereas the Mesquite Independent School District Board of Trustees seeks to honor outstanding classroom teachers who demonstrate leadership, innovation, and dedication to the students of Mesquite ISD, and whereas the Mesquite ISD Apple Corps consists of exceptional teachers nominated by their peers to receive the school district's highest recognition, therefore, be it resolved by the board officially welcomes Carrie Delaney into the Mesquite ISD Apple Corps on its 3rd day of October, 2022.
I do much better on a script, so I'm going to go ahead and get this out. Dr. Rivera, school board, thank you so much. I'm honored and humbled to accept this award. I would also like to thank my colleagues, my principal, who's here in attendance, my former principal, who's also here in attendance. It's funny to think my graduating year at SMU so long ago, when I swore up and down that I would never be a teacher or a coach. It's also funny to think that I got into teaching to coach, and I ended up loving the classroom even more. Everyone has bad days, but I have to say that my good days at Potteet outnumber the tough days exponentially. My students and my Potteet family give me the energy that I need to keep going. After 20 years, I do indeed bleed green, and I am so thankful for the relationships I have with my students, my fellow teachers, and my admin at Potteet High School. Thank you very much.
Ms. Delaney, do you have any members of your family that are here, or friends or colleagues you'd like to introduce or have stand?
I have colleagues, but my family's in Canada. So they didn't make the trip down to this, but yes.
Well, Kelly Long is back there at the back, and she referred to Taylor Morris over here, her former principal. And anyway, congratulations. Thank you so much. Proud of you.
All right. Our next honoree this evening is Shelley Coyle from Hanby Elementary School.
Shelley Coyle is so deserving of our Apple Corps honor this year. Shelley puts people first in every single thing she does. She has an unconditional love for her students, and she advocates for each and every one of them, just like they're her own child. The relationship she has established with her students surpass far beyond the time that she has with them. We are so blessed and honored to congratulate Shelley Coyle as our Apple Corps Teacher of the Year.
Hi, my name is Shelley Coyle. I'm a teacher at Hanby Elementary. I've been teaching for a total of 17 years. I don't feel so much as that I chose it, but that it is my calling. It's my mission every day to help students become better readers and to give them a safe place to do that, and to help them build the confidence that they need to be productive members in society. So I just feel like being a dyslexia teacher, and a teacher in general, that we are the foundation, the building block for all other professions, and what we do matters, and it matters even on the hard days.
I do not remember formulas on the board at Tassie when I was there like those formulas I saw tonight. That's their spelling formula as well. Okay. Proclamation. Whereas the Mesquite Independent School District Board of Trustees seeks to honor outstanding classroom teachers who demonstrate leadership, innovation, and dedication to their students. Whereas the Mesquite ISD Apple Corps consists of exceptional teachers nominated by their peers to receive the school district's highest recognition, therefore be it resolved that the board officially welcomes Shelley Coyle into the Mesquite ISD Apple Corps on the 3rd day of October, 2022. Thank you so much.
Okay, good evening. I would like to begin by thanking Dr. Rivera and our school board members for your dedication to our Mesquite ISD students and staff. I would like to recognize my family who are here supporting me this evening. My husband of 27 years, Doug, two of my sons, Luke and Landon, and my third son, Logan, who could not be here this evening because he's in the middle of midterms at Louisiana Tech in Ruston, hopefully doing well. I also want to thank my husband's parents, Zeke and Naomi Coyle, for driving in from Louisiana to be here. It's an honor to receive the Apple Corps award and join this elite group of educators. I've been teaching for 17 years, and the last 11 have been in Mesquite at Hanby Elementary. Teaching is my calling. It's my mission, mission filled daily, and for the last nine years, I've had the joy of teaching students with dyslexia how to read, spell, and write, including the spelling formulas, to give them a safe place to do that and to challenge them to be the best that they can be, and to create a classroom environment of mutual respect. It has truly been the most rewarding nine years of my career. During my time in Mesquite, I've had the privilege of working alongside several amazing leaders. Deborah Bassinger, who hired me as a 1st grade teacher at Hanby in 2011. Tammy Zeller, who beautifully exhibits the verse, "Count it all joy, my brothers and sisters, when you face trials of many kinds." And Jessica Eaton, who exemplifies leadership to me. I sent her a quote recently that said, "Leadership is not about titles, positions, or flow charts. It's about one's life influencing another." And she has done this for me. I would like to recognize and thank our Hanby staff for supporting our dyslexic students and the NTA program, and for nominating me for this award. I get to work with many great educators, not only at Hanby, but also through our NTA department, who truly desire what is best for our kids. And I'd like to recognize a few of those who have had a huge impact on my life. Cindy Music, Mary Tendeski, Debbie Malane, who could not be here this evening, Sharon Livingston, and Fatima Canonis. Specifically, I want to recognize my dear friend and coworker, Megan Kendrick.
Everyone needs a Megan in their life. She is intelligent, fiercely loyal, and she would do anything to bring joy to brighten my day. And I think we make a great team, and so I share this award with her, because she truly makes me a better teacher every day. So as October is Dyslexia Awareness Month, I want to close with this quote that I have in all my emails, and it says, "A teacher educated about dyslexia can be the one person who saves a child from years of frustration and anxiety." And that is my calling.
We can all see why teachers are so special. Ms. Coyle, if you will, have your family members that you introduced earlier stand for us. And then if you're a colleague from Hanby Elementary or one of the other schools, please stand. Thanks to both of you for the leadership you provide our district. We cannot be successful without the good things that occur in your classrooms each day. Thank you so much. Laura, go ahead.
Our next honoree this evening is our star para, and I don't believe I saw Lisa Porter here this evening. She usually introduces this award for us, so I will just start by saying that each month we recognize one of our outstanding para professionals, and this month is no exception. So now I'll call Jill Vincent, principal at Henry Elementary, to come forward and introduce us to her para of the month.
Good evening. It is a pleasure to be here, and first, I just want to say it's an honor to be a principal at Henry Elementary and serve alongside some exceptional educators every day. And here tonight, we are here to recognize one, Ms. Evelyn Mahia. And we were visiting right before the board meeting, and she is going on and on about this product that she used in the past that really worked with students and really grew them as readers in classrooms, and her excitement about working with small groups of students as she used this product, it's really inspirational. When you visit with her and you hear her talk about what she does with students each and every day, you can just tell that she has a heart for students. But I just wanted to share a few things that her colleagues wrote about her. Ms. Mahia never hesitates to step in and help when she sees a need. She builds relationships with students and has a genuine heart for kids. When I think of her, I always think of her positivity and her willingness to help our campus, and I could not have said it any better myself. So I just want to thank Ms. Mahia for everything and all the contributions that she makes to our students and to our staff at Henry Elementary. We could not do our job without incredible para professionals like her. Thank you.
And now we're going to recognize some students for their outstanding accomplishments. First, we have several students who received commended letters from the National Merit Program. First, we have Ernesto Rodriguez from Potteet High School. And let me just mention that about, or more than 2/3rds of the approximately 50,000 high scorers on the PSAT and MSQT receive letters of commendation and recognition of their outstanding academic promise. So we'll continue. This is Jordan Prime from Potteet High School. Myla Taylor, West Mesquite High School. Eloy Gonzalez, North Mesquite High School. Ethan Thompson, John Horn High School. And Darlene Santos from Mesquite High School. And next, we have students recognized by the National Hispanic Recognition Program. These students scored in the top 10% on the PSAT and MSQT and/or scored a 3 or higher on two or more AP exams. First, we have Beyonce Hernandez from West Mesquite High School. Isaac Compost, West Mesquite High School. Carla Ramirez Gonzalez, West Mesquite. Noel Hymus, West Mesquite. Anastasia Aguirre, North Mesquite High School. Angel Bueno, North Mesquite High School. Brenda Espinoza, North Mesquite High School. Christina Rodriguez, North Mesquite High School. Edward Ortagan, North Mesquite High School. Erin Salinas, North Mesquite. Gabrielle Breones, North Mesquite. Giovanni Gomez, North Mesquite. Jocelyn Vazquez, North Mesquite High School. Kiri Espinoza, North Mesquite High School. Mark Bylon, North Mesquite High School. Melanie Rivera, North Mesquite. Michael Constanza, North Mesquite High School. Natalie Chavez, North Mesquite High School. Paola Escobedo, North Mesquite. Saul Sanchez, North Mesquite High School. Tanya Cavassos, North Mesquite High School. Tanya Cavassos, North Mesquite High School. Wendy Sanchez, North Mesquite High School. Adriana Oriana, John Horn High School. Daisy Oroscot, North, I'm sorry, John Horn High School. Diego Rodriguez Castro, John Horn High School. Mia Hernandez, John Horn High School. Sofia Garcia, John Horn High School. Angela Garcia, Mesquite High School. Our next group of honorees is from the National Rural and Small Town Recognition Award. They scored in the top 10% on the PSAT and MSQT and/or scored a three or higher on two or more AP exams. From John Horn High School, Ariana Carroll. From John Horn High School, Jennifer Edward. This next group of students is recognized by the National African American Recognition Program. They scored in the top 10% on the PSAT and MSQT and/or scored a three or higher on two or more AP exams. From North Mesquite High School, Giovanni Gomez. Elizabeth Akanjie, John Horn High School. Ifyoma Menakaya, John Horn High School. And Angelique Ikine, North Mesquite High School. And our final recognition of the evening is for our Mesquite ISD community partner, and I believe we have a video about this partner.
This month, we are so excited to recognize Book Drive for Kids as our featured Read, Play, Talk community partner.
Book Drive for Kids is a local nonprofit, and we're on a mission to get books into the hearts and homes of children.
We first got connected with Book Drive for Kids back in the spring through one of our other community partners' childcare group. Since our partnership began, Book Drive for Kids has donated hundreds of books to Read, Play, Talk that we've been able to distribute in our summer events and also within our Lena Star groups.
Our main avenue of getting books into the hands of children who are disadvantaged, who don't really have books at home, is to host free book fairs at their schools. So our primary way we started five years ago of getting books into the community to children was through our free book fairs. But last year, we received a 50,000-book commitment of used books from Thrift Books. So we have this inventory of books that we need to place, and it's wonderful to be able to partner with you and to sort those and get exactly the books that you need.
We are so grateful for our partners, especially our partnership with Book Drive for Kids. Without this partnership, we would not be able to do the things that we do.
If the board has no objections, the time is 7:00 PM. We'll take about an eight-minute break, so we'll be back at 7:08. Okay, it's 7:07, and the board will reconvene from the break. Next item on the agenda is under consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Bing and a second by Mr. Carbo to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item is under audience. Ms. Jobe, do we have anyone?
I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is under the reports of the superintendent under personnel. It's an action item to approve an administrative term contract.
Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to bring a recommendation to the board for Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations. As y'all know, Mr. Poppy has leaving us for a position at another district, so I would like to recommend Gilbert Prado for the position of Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations. And as I read it, your short bio, Mr. Prado, as you move up to the lectern. Gilbert Prado has completed 27 years in the field of school finance and business operations. He started his career in Dallas ISD, where he served in various roles, including budget specialist, assistant director, director, and executive director for budgeting services. Mr. Prado then transitioned to Garland ISD, where he was executive director of budget, position control, workforce management, purchasing, and risk management. Finally, he served as chief, financial officer in Cedar Hill ISD, and Northwest ISD. Mr. Prado earned his bachelor of arts degree from Middlebury College in Vermont and also earned the Registered Texas School Business Administrator designation. Our recommendation for Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations. This is an action item.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Mr. Seward and a second by Ms. Whitlock to approve the administrative term contract with Gilbert Prado. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Mr. Prado, are you a golfer?
I can try.
Well, our former CFO did too.
We're in good company.
Go ahead if you'd like to.
Dr. Rivera, President Everett, Board of Trustees, the executive team that brought my name forward for consideration, I want to thank you for the action that you took tonight. I look forward to serving the students and the community of Mesquite ISD. I am really, really happy to be here. Tonight, I also have my wife Lisa and my sister-in-law Karen supporting me tonight. So again, I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart, and I look forward to working with each one of you. Thank you.
I guess welcome back to the Dallas area. Let's go forward. Next item is under effect investor report. It's a report under transportation, and we'll hear from Terry Mapengo.
Back up, so I'm a little bit, I'll be, I'll be good. Okay, so this is my clicker. Let me see if I, okay, just wanted to make sure it was working. Got it. All right. First, I would like to thank Dr. Rivera and the board and the cabinet for all of your guys' support this year. You guys have made a positive impact on our transportation department, especially with the raises that you guys approved last year for our drivers and monitors and getting competitive with other districts. You guys just, I just want to tell you thank you from the bottom of my heart. I want to start off with some things that I'm most proud of and that maybe something that you guys might not know about my department. We have, all of our monitors and our drivers are CPR and CPI-trained. We have three certified master technicians, and that is really rare to find that in a district. You usually go to other districts and maybe they have one to maybe none. We have three, and we, that's what our focus is on in our shop, is getting our other two mechanics up to speed with their certifications and getting them master certified. We also have four certified TEACs instructors, and that is through Texas A&amp;M. We are certified to train all of our drivers, and we will have four more by the end of this year. We also have two first-place state bus rodeo champions in our, in our department, Roy Akins and also Bill Fullington. And so those are really exciting things, so I thought I'd bring that up for you guys. We also, you know, our drivers, we keep the wheels going in bad weather of all kinds, and you guys have been able to see that this year and last year with our icy roads and also the flooding. We had no incidents, and we kept those kids safe, and I just, I was so proud of my department during those two days of that inclement weather. We also have, Steve Jobs said, "Great things in business are never done by one person, they're done by a team of people." And my team of people transported almost 8,000 field trips last year. They transport over 6,500 students each day and 214 routes and shuttles per day, and we have over 200 employees, and we could not do it without every single one of them. So what's new, what's new going on at transportation? Some of the things last year that really helped either get people in and was our, we got a training portable. We didn't have something to train all of our employees. We would have to kick out the people that were in the break rooms so that we could train, but we got that. Scott's team was able to bring that in for us pretty quick, and we had 14 drivers last year that completed their CDL training program because we had that, that access to a training building. We also have new behind-the-wheel training equipment that the welding shop at, I think it was, his name's Trace, we came with a vision of what we needed, and he built it for us, and we were able to do our bus rodeo with that, train behind the wheel this summer with all of our drivers. And we also, on February 18th, we had to implement ELDT training, which is entry-level driver training, and that is through the state, not through the state, it's through the nation. We have to have ELDT training before any of our, anyone can go get a CDL, and that's for Class A or Class B. And we, we made our training, and we went with the guidelines that the, that they gave us, and we don't have to outsource for that. We can do it all in-house for that. We also have KEOM bus safety messages, and that was a nice little, it's kind of fun having my drivers come in and be like, "I heard you on the radio." And, and even my kids, they're like, "Is that you, Mom?" So we also did mental health first aid. We got a tip from, that they could come and, and teach all of our staff, and so we did that in January, and we were able to have all of them have some mental health first aid, even spotting kids that are dealing with that. Student management classes, we do that every month, and that has helped tremendously with all of our, and again, that's using that training portable. It really has just been a game changer for us, so again, just thank you for that. Roy Akins, he is our fleet manager, and he placed second place this summer in the Texas Best Competition, and that is out of all of Texas. And so we're really proud of him. We also have Jose Simpuentes. He placed second place in Region 10 Bus Rodeo, and he also competed at the state level. And this coming year, we are looking to have three teams actually compete at Region 10. We will have Special Ed competing. There's a group of five is basically what we have, and then for regular transportation and then a transit. So we will have 15 of our Mesquite drivers competing at, at the Region 10 rodeo this year. Our commitment to the community, one of the things that is near and dear to our hearts is the Read Play Talk. We've done book drives for Read Play Talk, volunteered at Read Play Talk events. We were also awarded the community partner for Read Play Talk in 2022, and we also love to be involved in any of the parades that they have with the city. We also do food drives for Mesquite ISD Food Pantry. We transport students for the vision test that Macy Dosie, they have a bus that goes to one of the campuses, while we bring other kids from other campuses over so that they can get their vision test and go home with a pair of glasses. And then in 2020, we provided gifts for 60 McKinney-Vento students, and in 2021, we doubled that and adopted 175 McKinney-Vento students for Christmas. We partner with the City of Mesquite for summer programs, and we're involved in city emergency planning. Desire, vision, and focus help you turn the bus in the right direction, but positive energy is necessary to take you where you want to go. That positive energy is how I lead my team. I want it to be a positive atmosphere, and so transportation employees are vital, a vital resource to providing a positive climate. And so we do employee contests, we do daytime social events, holiday dinners, employee appreciation days. We, we participate in the Santa Fun Run together, employee of the month, team building, and the big one is that community service opportunities, because when we're serving others, it's the best feeling in the world. Continuing to grow, prosper, and strive for excellence, looking ahead, our biggest project right now that we are working on, and I just want to let you guys know, is we are working on providing 50 to 100% in-house McKinney-Vento transportation. Right now, we outsource to, to three other companies, but we are trying to get that all in-house, and we are in that, those stages right now. We're getting very, very close. Special Ed Fall Festival, we are also participating in. We've partnered with Special Ed to, to have a booth there, and then also, we have a speech contest and a poster contest through TAPT, and I have brought this to the speech teachers here in Mesquite and also the art teachers, and it's on bus safety, and they actually have scholarships that they, they give out for this. And I know that we have awesome talent here in Mesquite ISD, and so I wanted to give that opportunity to those kids as well. And so we'll be doing an in-house one, and then those finalists will go to the state level. So we're excited about that as well. First and foremost, you know, we, our drivers and monitors are the first good morning and the last good night, and, you know, our primary role is to get those children to and from home safely. And, you know, with that comes responsibility of starting them off on the right foot and getting them home. And that positive energy that we implement at our transportation facility, we hope leads to that in our buses as well. And And we never want to lose sight of why we do what we do, and I just want to tell you guys again, thank you so much for taking care of us and supporting us, and thank you for letting me present, you know, the wonderful things that are happening at Transportation, and I'm just so proud of my team and all the work that they have done. And that's it. If you guys have any questions?
You mentioned our, our.
Oh. Oh, I, I missed the thank you one. There was a thank you at the end. Okay. Yes.
The guys that have the master technician stuff, and there's some more training, do we have a program in place that?
Yeah.
To provide the training that they need to get those certifications?
Yeah, it's through TASBT, and, and so they, they go through those classes. I send them to any classes that we have, whether it be in Frisco or out of town. So we, yeah, they're, they're getting closer. We have one that I think, he has a few more classes that he needs to pass, and then he needs to go in for his actual final test.
Does that include the CDL? Because now there's a new law that besides taking the test itself, you have to take classes in class.
Yes, yeah, and all of my mechanics all have to get their CDL.
Do they get it through the district or do they go outside?
Through us.
Ah, nice.
Yeah, of course, we train. Come on, you can come too as well.
Okay. Had my opportunity.
Kevin, you're retired, you can drive now.
Right?
Before you leave, I have to brag.
Okay.
Y'all, we had a major fire event last Friday at apartment complex, and they were looking for some transportation for some of the misplaced, displaced residents, and they had tried several places in the city to get it done, and looked at me and said, "Is there any way?" And so I called Taylor, and I said, "Is there any way?" And literally, by the time I hung up the phone, here comes Terry and two buses and several staff members around the corner to provide, and they were willing to provide anything that those folks needed to get them transitioned to where they had to go. I know there's been some times at the end of last year, I believe there was another district whose bus broke down, 635, or involved an accident, and we quickly sent buses out to pick those kids from another district up and get them someplace safe where they were going. So that's a proud moment for me and the board members, when I know that, when people get behind, and they look at us and go, "Can you help?" And literally, within 10 minutes, we have people on scene ready to do what they got to do. So we really appreciate the work that you guys do.
Thank you.
Terry, we value what goes on in our classrooms each day, but what you do with the Transportation Department, those things don't go unnoticed. We appreciate all the employees at Transportation, and thank you for everything that you do for us. Next item on the agenda is under administration. It's an action item to approve campus and district performance objectives. Janine?
Evening, President Everett, trustees, and Dr. Rivera. Per Board policy, BQ Local, the campus and district performance objectives are listed on tonight's agenda as an action item. But before I go into information about the actual performance objectives and the improvement plans, I wanted to let you know about a new platform that we're using for the campus improvement planning process and the district improvement plan. Previously, a Google document template was used for district and campus improvement planning. That format made visibility to the plans particularly difficult, and it didn't yield any reports that would help us monitor the implementation and the success of the improvement plans from the district level. Additionally, changes to federal requirements made it challenging to ensure our plans were consistently in compliance, which is critically important, given the implications of federal guidelines and Title I requirements. Last spring, the decision was made to transition to a program called Plan for Learning, a web-based software program that ensures consistency across all improvement plans. Although this decision was made before my arrival to the district, I have worked in districts that have had Plan for Learning and districts that have not, and I must say, I am relieved that we have Plan for Learning in place, just to make sure that we are on top of every piece of our campus and district improvement plans. There's a slight difference in terminology used in the platform, so for those of you who looked at the district improvement plans and campus plans last year, what was listed as a TEA strategic priority statement is now simply listed as goal in Plan for Learning, but it's exactly the same thing. We are still staying aligned to the TEA strategic priority statements, and what was previously listed as objective is now performance objective. The new platform provides us, again, a consistent template to use across the entire district, so everybody knows exactly how to fill it out, what each of the components represent, and we know where to find specific information. It improves our capacity to monitor the plans. It also includes aligned professional learning plans, so we identify our strategies, our actions that we're going to take, but we make sure that we are equipping our staff with the appropriate skills and resources necessary to implement the plan, align budget expenditures, and, most importantly, compliance with federal law. While this slide may be a little bit difficult to read, it's a screenshot of the actual plan. The platform ensures each plan includes the required comprehensive needs assessment. I'm sure you noticed as you reviewed the performance objectives, there is some repetition across the plans, and that's very intentional. Through the process, we wanted to make sure that we were aligned in our goals, we were aligned in our performance objective at the district level and the campus level to improve our likelihood of achieving our actual goals. Campuses did have some flexibility, though, to meet their individual site needs, and so they added some additional performance objectives and strategies to do so. Components of the plan include those high-leverage strategies with aligned professional learning, resources, and they articulated the expected impact. The expected impact is particularly helpful because the plans require formative quarterly reviews. So beginning this November, we will be reviewing the campus improvement plans and the district improvement plans to determine progress we've made, and if any adjustments need to be made to any of the plans. And with that, that is our presentation, previewing the performance objectives. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any. Good. Very important, and, and just to know that we can take a look at all of the campus improvement plans and see, are there any components missing at one glance? Have they completed their formative assessment in a timely manner? Are they making progress? Do we need to send in some guidance and support to help them maybe reconsider some strategies that might yield a greater impact? It's hugely beneficial.
I don't see one for the academy. They don't fall under this category, right?
Remember, the academy is a, is a program.
Program.
Not a campus, and so campus have campus improvement plans. We made that switch.
I was just asking for clarification.
Yeah, thank you.
Lots of good information, Dr. Fields. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board, this is an action item. You have a motion by Mr. Rose and a second by Mr. Bingham to approve the campus and district performance objectives. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item is a report regarding the marketing plan overview. Looks like Sabrina Smith is coming forward. Welcome, Sabrina.
Good evening, President Everett, board trustees, and Dr. Rivera. On behalf of Chief of Communications, my boss, Dr. Laura Jobe, and our team, I am very honored to take a few, few minutes to provide you with some highlights from a comprehensive strategic plan that our team created in 2021 to identify objectives, strategies, and tactics aimed at supporting the district vision of excellence always. So we have three parts to our plan. We like to call them the ABCs of our marketing plan, the first one being awareness. This is from a survey that we conducted last spring with our stakeholders, families and staff. Just wanted to kind of measure what tools and tactics we had in place and how effective they were. What we learned from this slide is that the top three places where people often get their news is the Parent and Staff Three Things e-newsletter, which goes out once a week. The family version goes out in English and Spanish, and then our Skylert Phone and Text Notification System, as well as other emails, Skylert and others. And then I wanted to point out our website, which is consistently a source of where people go to get their information and news, and you may have heard that we had a little web redesign this year. We launched on July 7th. We're very pleased, gotten great feedback from the new design, and a couple of features I just wanted to point out. The direct access to a menu of our campus webpages. We've seen a great increase in the analytics of visitors to our campus websites. This wasn't previously available, couldn't get directly to campus sites, so we feel like that's really beneficial. We also have a Find It Fast menu where you can, some people just like to go search right for what they want to find, and we also have organized by user, website user, some of our top websites and content that people are searching for and that we know from our Google Analytics. So very pleased with how the redesign turned out, and we do have, we love data around here. I particularly love to be able to see something that tells us that not only do we feel like it's better, the website's performing better. So the bounce rate is when someone comes to your website and they immediately leave. They don't go any further. I liken it to the, you know, curb appeal. Someone pulls up and is like, "Nah, I don't want to go in there and look." So we had about a 40% bounce rate with the previous design in the same period, and this year, since we've launched, we've got that down to 24. So that means the site is engaging, and people feel like they want to look around. We've had 1.3 million page views just since we launched in July, and they're spending about an average of 2 minutes and 45 seconds on the site. So significant enough time to find what they're looking for, but not too much time and not too many clicks. So we're really pleased with how that turned out. This is a look at a comprehensive marketing campaign we did in partnership with Pre-K this year, contains all the elements, digital, print. We had yard signs, we did social media, we did video, had really great success. That may be a little bit hard to read. Those are districts in the metroplex that work with Commit, and you see there where the arrow is, that's us. We recovered from pre-COVID enrollment, so 2019 enrollment, we met that goal and, and then some, by 123%. So very pleased with that and the efforts of our team in the marketing of that program. This was another question on our survey. We wanted to know what kind of content people like to see on our social media they're most likely to engage with, and that top amount, the top category was campus or classroom activities shared from other pages. So we adjust in our marketing plan and switch kind of from a content creating at the district level, because people told us they liked to see the content from the campuses. So we've moved into supporting our campuses, encouraging them to have robust content, even our departments, some of our departments as well, but our campus social media content, and this was something new. Late last year, we initiated a social media excellence award. We're always looking for campuses and departments that are demonstrating excellence in their social media content, so we're encouraging and supporting them, and this has been a really big success in that effort. So switching to the B, that's for branding. If you've heard me talk about branding before, you know it's more than just the visual identity, but that's for the sake of time what we're going to kind of highlight today. The identity, our logo, we're really working towards brand visibility and consistency across the district and our campuses. So if you'll take a look, this is where we were in the spring of '21. We had a little bit of inconsistency in logo use, clip art, photos, we looked at social media and what, what icons and graphics were being used on the campus. There was a lot of inconsistency. So our graphic designer, Aaron Libby, has been a superstar, working with not only our high school campuses, which we also had some trademark infringement potential going on there, but as well as some outdated logos. And if you look where we are now, we are almost got everybody with their own official branded mascot logo mark. So you'll see those on marquees, you should see those when you enter the building, t-shirts, email signatures, and that sort of thing. So we've really found some consistency there. We still have a couple elementary schools we're working with, and we've actually already started conversations with Cross on what some logo concepts might look like for them. So very proud of that work. Great job by Aaron. He was actually featured by a high school mascot social media account. They interviewed him for the work that he did on those rebrands at Potteet and North and Horn and West. The branding support continues with social media graphics and photography. Again, that's Aaron's work. We have supported them in facility branding as well. You've seen a lot of that at Horn. Walk in the door at West, you see the Wrangler. And drive by, all of our schools will eventually have, and thank you to facilities for working with us to help create a design that allowed for that branding space so that you see that mascot and color when you pull up to the campus and start to associate that consistent brand experience. So here's another example, supporting a department. Chastity Willie has been amazing to work with with personnel. We kind of came in and helped revamp their look of their recruiting table, the tablecloths, all the material that goes on top, the collateral that's printed. We've worked hand-in-hand with them and feel like done a really great job of getting all their touchpoints branded consistently. She and I are also now kind of co-managing a LinkedIn page, which the district didn't have a presence there before, hoping to really reach potential employees and teachers there. And we recently just started trying to utilize the Facebook Jobs feature and had a little bit of success with that. So really working to support them and be consistently branded across all of our touchpoints when we're searching for new staff. Lastly, on branding, this is a webpage that's on our, under Communications Department, but you can get directly to it, mesquiteisd.org/misdstandards. We're trying to create a brand standard. Departments can get straight to logos there that Aaron has developed, so each department has an official logo in variety of, of shapes and sizes for a letterhead, whether it be embroidery on a shirt, email signatures. We're really looking for some consistency so that our departments are branded independently, so you know what department it came from, but also in the overall umbrella of our brand of MISD Excellence, which we know that star represents and stands for. So also campuses can find their official logos there as well, and Aaron's contact is down there if they have any additional graphic needs. So lastly, we get to client experience. Now, this was customer service previously, and we made an intentional decision to shift that after doing some research, because we don't sell anything, so we don't have customers. We have clients because we're in a service industry. So we believe that by using the word client experience, we're focusing not on just delivering a service, providing an answer or giving a piece of paper, but really treating our stakeholders that need things from us as our clients and, and working towards giving them an experience that is excellence. One thing that's key to any component, when you're talking about customer service or client experience, is removing barriers. And with the addition of Brenda Gonzalez to our staff about a year ago, we have really focused on removing a language barrier and being intentional about reaching out to our Spanish-speaking families. You can see our Facebook Spanish group has doubled in size since last August. We also have been intentional, she has been intentional about reaching out to Spanish-speaking media, gained quite a bit of media coverage there. Also, our videos and print products are being produced in Spanish intentionally so that we remove that obstacle for our Spanish-speaking families. We also have added the Spanish-speaking podcast, which is doing very well. So we conducted a customer service audit last spring, a secret shopper, if you will. What we learned from that, and there's some, some notes and takeaways there, but basically what we learned was that we have not provided our frontline staff with the training and resources that they need to deliver that excellent client experience. And so that is what we're focusing on now and trying to build a framework around our Mesquite Promise. So we wanted, we don't want to go buy a program. We want it to be organic and true to our culture and climate and our needs, so we're working with these eight habits from the promise. We feel directly relate to a client experience, and I have a committee of frontline seasoned folks that are going to help us develop that framework, develop some training resources. Our guys will help us create some video library training and other things, resources that will be online, a new family packet. I have to give kudos to our Personnel Department, Kelly Haddick, the Secretary of Support, and Brian, our auditor. They have already launched this playbook for campus secretaries. We can't take any credit except for the cover, the branded cover, but that's their content, and it's a resource that will help our secretaries provide better service. So I just clicked it off. I think that's it. One more thing to be looking for, badges and recognition, because once we do have the framework in place and we're able to train and provide the resources we want to celebrate and recognize exceptional customer-client experiences provided by our teams, so we will be looking to recognize them through badging and recognitions. And that is my time. Does anyone have any questions? Well, there's this thing called a Vader. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Sabrina. Good job. Next item on the agenda is an action item to approve the agreement for legal services or outside counsel. Mr. Thomas.
President Rose, board members, Dr. Rivera. Board policy BDD Local. Can you hear me? Did I say President Everett? I'm sorry. President Everett, board members, and Dr. Rivera. Board policy BDD Local allows the general counsel in consultation with the superintendent to retain outside counsel on an as-needed basis to ensure the district's interests are protected. On August 10th, 2022, the district requested qualification statements from outside law firms. Based on a review of those responses, I recommend that the board approve the general counsel in consultation with the superintendent to enter into negotiations for agreements with the law firms contained in the board packet. Have any questions? Have any questions?
Motion approved. Second Amendment, Daniel, to approve the agreement for legal service.
To approve the general counsel and superintendent to enter into negotiations for the legal agreements.
Is there any additional discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you. President Everett.
Next item on the agenda is an action item regarding the Level 4 grievance hearing from parent Christina Kennedy. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move that the board affirms the administration's Level 3 decision.
We have a motion by Mr. Carbone and second by Mr. Bingham to affirm the administration's Level 3 decision regarding the Level 4 grievance hearing. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries 4-0 with two abstentions. Next item on the agenda is under discussion. It's a discussion of the district-wide intruder detection audit report findings. And I believe we're going to hear from Mr. Morris.
I will be brief, but good evening, everyone. As many of you know, Region 10, in conjunction with the Texas School Safety Center, have been conducting random intruder audits in Texas school districts this year. A top priority, the Mesquite ISD is keeping students and staff safe every day. Texas School Safety Center recently conducted several intruder audits on our campuses. The auditors test a variety of components, including but not limited to whether a campus is accessible to unauthorized individuals, a review of our current safety practices, ensures we are checking exterior doors consistently, and it checks the functionality of our external doors. These audits required by the state seek to help districts identify how campuses can improve student safety. The audit provides us with an opportunity to create a safer learning environment for our students and staff. We're working closely with the Texas School Safety Center and our School Safety and Security Committee to ensure that we're training all staff in securing our exterior doors to protect those within our buildings. The support from the state in conducting these audits is just one of the many actions we've taken to ensure our schools are safe. We know this is a continuous journey and we appreciate the board's support. We acknowledge that parents and community members are likely to be interested in the audit results. However, the results are not to be released as it could compromise important campus security information. Specific details are discussed in executive session with the Safety and Security Committee. Again, Mesquite ISD is committed to providing a safe and secure learning environment for our students and staff. It is a discussion item.
Thank you, Taylor. I know one of the things that's a top priority for every school district, not only in the state of Texas, but also throughout the country, is safety and security. And one of the things on November the 8th, on the ballot, that this board has voted to have our community go into a voter approval tax rate election, and one of the three big items, if that particular proposition is supported by the voters of this district, is to enhance our security and safety at all of our campuses. So, we know how important this is. So, looking forward to that on November the 8th. So, we would encourage everyone to get out and study the details regarding the vader and make wise decisions. Anything else?
Yeah, Mr. President, I was just going to say, we spoke about that this weekend a lot, safety. And some districts even explained how they have been training their students to be cautious, to have caution too, because sometimes they're opening doors for their friends that are coming from the parking lot, maybe running late or something, but that could be a risk as well. So, we have to make sure that our students are cognizant about that. Sometimes springs get old after several years, and we even experienced that, well, when I work, because I'm retired. But we experienced that with old springs, for example. You have to look at that and maybe our maintenance group could make sure that those are things that we look at as well. So, there's caution to the wind.
Well, I appreciate Mr. Taylor and his staff and everybody that's been working hard on safety and security for all of our students, and also the committee that's been put together from the community, the work they're putting into this and our partnership with the several police forces in our district, as well as fire and others. They're doing a tremendous job talking about those issues to make sure that we're covering the bases, to try to make it as safe as possible and make it so our kids and our families feel like we can drop them off at school and they're going to be coming home that evening, safe and sound. So, thank you again and your staff.
Anything else? Okay, we'll move on to instruction and a report under IO app MVP. Looks like we've got Kara Jackson. Welcome, Kara.
MVP, that's right. I am so excited to present to y'all tonight. We're going to look at a couple of different things, a little bit of the new features that are in the web application, and then also go into the MVP of the mobile app that was approved about six months ago. We're coming down to the end of the MVP, the minimal viable product, looking at an application for phones and other devices besides just a web-based version. And so, some really exciting things that have come our way. So, let's start with the web app new features first. One of the great things that has come is the campus highlights. The information is now being gathered and brought together for all of our campuses individually, and then we're able to look at that, starting to look at that as a whole by the district, being able to see what are our students really interested in? What are they researching? This gives us that opportunity for campuses to make decisions about clubs that they may want to have, opportunities to provide to our students. But it also allows us, will allow us to look as a district of what do we, what do we need to provide to our students that they're interested in and want to continue to pursue. Content moderation is another new piece that has come out for us within the platform. We always knew, we wanted to have some of that control over the platform and be able to adapt and adjust the platform as we continue down the road of IO. We knew that things were going to change, and so that content moderation, I know that looks really small there, but it gives us the opportunity to go in and make changes and adjustments. So, if we decide that we're not going to do a certain club, or we want to go in and do different translations, things like that, anything that we want to adapt and change, we are now getting that control in Mesquite ISD. We're not relying on the developer to make all of those changes for us, which is really important. The IO suggestions has been really incredible. You know, our dream was that AI would start informing our students about, you like, you know, this, you like this game, you like this activity, here's some other things you might like. Currently, IO has made over 274,000 suggestions to our students here in Mesquite ISD. So, is it working? Yes, it's working. That AI piece is working. We're getting more and more information. The AI is continuing to build so that we can continue to provide more suggestions for our students based on their interests. The opportunities is another one that's really interesting and exciting. So, opportunities is going to be those activities or books or videos that you might want to go and explore. Over 913,000 suggestions have been made to our students based on what their passions, what their interests are, and what their aptitudes are. So, that's really exciting to see. Leadership attributes for parents. Through our strategic roadmap, we wanted to make sure that we're including all stakeholders. We saw IO as an opportunity to bring information not only to our students and our teachers, but also to the parents so that they can understand who their child is and support them in school. So, bringing leadership attributes allows our parents now to provide information about what their child does really well. How are they leaders in the home? What kind of goals are they working on as well? And so, that's an opportunity now that our parents can start to inform IO in addition to the survey that they can already take. Goals and evidence of growth. This one's another exciting one because it's the precursor to that portfolio we've talked about for quite a while. We want our students to be able to take that portfolio of work with them based on their passions and aptitudes. What are they really good at? What can they take with them further? So, as they set goals and they submit, they can submit evidence of growth, they can submit products. It may be videos, it may be podcasts, it could be artwork, maybe pictures that they're putting into their platform. And then IO is taking that information, and we're getting ready in a couple of months to roll out what that portfolio is going to look like. So, IO will start pulling their products and all of their evidence of growth that they've had, their reflections, and pull that into their portfolio at the end. Aptitudes is another one that's fairly new since we, since I last presented. And so, we are starting to identify the different aptitudes. You can see here just different aptitudes that we've identified that our students are common aptitudes. So, you'll see like a language aptitude, maybe it's a physical aptitude, and IO is starting to identify those within our students. We've had about 14,000 aptitudes that have been identified with our students. It's still fairly new to us, but we're going to continue identifying those with them. Email notifications. One of the questions we got a lot is, how do I know something changed? So, teachers wanted to know, do I have to go look every time that a student submitted something? Not anymore. We're emailing them notifications, so it makes it easier on them. They don't have to go search. It's going to email them and say, hey, here's some things that have changed with some of our students. You may want to talk to them about it. You may want to have a heads-up about that. And the other part of the email notifications is, you're going to see in our SEL piece that we are, have added to the app, is notifying counselors, maybe when somebody has not had some great days, and they might need to talk to somebody. And so, there's a notification system in place. Right now, sometimes our students have to go around and find a QR code in order to be able to talk to somebody. This will pick it up automatically and go ahead and alert that counselor, you know, they've had a few bad days, you might need to grab that kiddo and talk to them. SEL insights is another piece that is coming to the web application. So, this is the part that our staff will see, and they'll see it across, the campus level will see it as well. So, you can start to see, hey, you know, they're not having a great day, or you start to see that over time. Currently, some of our teachers have post-it notes, and the kids go and put the post-it note on the door for how they're feeling that day. And then that post-it note goes down, and they don't know that anymore. And so, they can start to see over time, how's that student doing? How are their emotions? There's everything from angry and sad and worried to silly and goofy and happy. So, let's go into the mobile app MVP now. Now, remember, the mobile app and the web app were designed, they're independent of each other currently. We wanted to start down a little bit different road with our mobile app versus the web app. We didn't want to just repeat everything we've already done. We wanted to keep going and continuing to build. So, in our mobile app, the first thing that our students see is they get a mood check-in. So, it pops up and says, how are you feeling today? And what I love about this is then after they check in and they say that they're happy, they can go down and they can explain, hey, what are you happy about? Anything else you want to tell us about that? You're sad? Is there anything else that you want to tell us about? Was there an event or something else that occurred? The next part of that is, once they submit that, it's going to bring up a page that our counselors worked so hard on of resources. So, you're happy? Hey, here's a way that you can continue to stay happy. You can exercise. You can write a list of gratitude, five things that you're grateful for. There's lots of just opportunities for our students to continue to engage in, hey, I'm feeling great today, here's some things I can continue, or hey, you're not feeling great today, here's some things you can do. There's a breathing techniques that they can do. So, this takes it from the SEL only being with a counselor and only being with a teacher back to their home. So, when they're not feeling great at night either, they can go, you know what, I'm not feeling so great. What are some of those strategies I could do so that I can feel better, so that I'm not angry or worried or have anxiety tonight? I can get through there. The other thing is providing the suicide hotline information to our students so that at night they have access and know who are some trusted adults that they can contact when they're away from school. The next part of that social emotional learning is, as we talked about already a little bit, the 24/7. So, this is constant. They can check in and start to get those resources anytime that they want to. As we did our first part of the MVP phase, we pulled students in to ask them, what do you need? What is it you, what could we help you with? And our students talked about how they have, they really struggle with understanding, or not understanding, managing their time. How do I manage my time when it comes time to study? And so, one of the things that we put in is a Pomodoro timer. It's a focus timer. They can set it to study for 25 minutes, they can set it to study for five minutes, and then take a five or 10-minute break. And then they can, and kind of start managing and learn to self-manage the time to get the things done that they need to get done. Notifications. Many of you are familiar with notifications on your phone, so same thing in IO. Notifications, maybe that they earned a badge, or maybe it's a notification that they need to check in that day. And so, the encouragement to check in, see how you're feeling, and get any, get access to any of the resources that you need. Badges is another thing we've been asking Softserve for, and they did an incredible job. So, our students can earn badges through all of their leadership attributes. They can earn badges through their, through SEL by engaging in the SEL activities. And then there's fun ones like a digital discoverer. And so, they can, there's lots of different badges that kids can earn, and it encourages them to continue in their path in earning those. Endorsements. Now, there's a lot of information on this slide, and I go back and forth on whether to show it like this or not, but there is so much to endorsements. It is huge. And our teaching and learning team, our CTE group, have done an incredible job of pulling together all of the resources because we want our students to be better informed when they're choosing a program of study when they go into high school. We want all of our students to choose a program of study that they're interested in. After some survey information that we had done at the end of last year, we realized that we could probably give them some more information, better inform them and their parents about what they're choosing so that they know what's available to them. The other part of this endorsement and program of study is it lets our kids know what we have available. Our teaching and learning team, I know, is even looking at, how do we start informing our students in fourth and fifth grade about what Mesquite ISD has to offer for our students when they get to high school? So, whether it's a program at one of our traditional high schools or even at Vanguard, we want them to have all of the information so they can make informed decisions versus going in and going, oh, I think I want to be a teacher, or my dad said I should be, that we want them to have informed decisions on that. The endorsements right now, over 10,000 suggestions have been made to students within endorsements. So, what's on the roadmap coming up? And that got messy there, didn't it? The feature highlights some of the things that are coming up. We have a student planner so students can work on homework. What does my planner look like? What are the activities I have? Helping them organize their day. Opportunities explorer, so exploring those opportunities. What books are suggested? What are some, maybe some courses that are suggested? A mobile app tour. You can see the student planner, and it's, those are going to continue. Endorsement pathways is going to be huge. We'll be rolling a lot of that work out in October with all of our middle school campuses. And then a student choice board. We know our students need to make choices, and they've got to be able to reflect on the choices they make, and they need to know, hey, maybe it wasn't a great choice, but I can reflect on it and know that that's not the best choice for me. And so, some choice boards within the instructional landscape that they see. You'll see in the web app delivery, lesson planners for our teachers, so helping inform our teachers about our students and what their gaps are so that they're not having to go to, you know, five or six different places to get information, pulling the data into one place for the teachers to make it easier for them. We want this to be as easy as possible and have information at the fingertips of our teachers so that they can do what they do best, and that's plan those lessons and teach and deliver. You'll also see the student portfolio that I talked about earlier. That's coming pretty soon. And then, again, the choice boards and the lesson planner with those insights is coming. All right. I think that's it. Any questions?
We have 33,000, around 33,000, over 33,000 that have continued to give consent.
The teacher doesn't have to do anything. It goes straight to the student.
It goes straight to the student.
And the teacher can see what those interests are. They can see, hey, this student has these interests or these aptitudes.
I guess to the web, and then eventually it'll be through the app.
Yes.
Okay.
Kara, on the software, the program, has it moved pretty fast? I mean, the Is, I mean, the process that they built with the infrastructure?
The infrastructure is great, yes. It does take a little bit of time. So anytime a student clicks anything, it's, it's informing the system. It's always informing AI. So they could go in and say, hey, I don't feel great today. It's informing AI. They could say, hey, I like basketball now. It's informing the AI system and the opportunities are changing, other opportunities to select different interests is changing, being able to explain that and even maybe even towards their endorsements or activities they may want to participate in school. But it's always consistently changing.
So is all this stored on a cloud somewhere?
It is. So we have everything in our, in our Google Cloud platform. So in our GCP is where everything is stored.
Let's say a child puts in there over a three-year period. Does it keep a history so they can go back and look at time? Here's what I had back then, now I'm over at this point.
The kid won't see that. We're giving them.
Current.
Up-to-date current data. We're not giving them the historical data, but the historical data will be there.
So on the mood check-in.
Mm-hmm.
Do we, does it, I would assume there's a monitor of some kind for keywords that would cause an intervention if, if needed?
Yes. So we're working on identifying what some of those keywords would be.
Okay.
It's not fully there and functional yet.
Okay.
But that would be where they would type in, that what I showed you, where they type in and say, hey, I'm feeling angry today because, or, or those kind of pieces. Those, we're looking at what, what keywords would trigger a, an email or something to their counselor within the school day or to that suicide hotline suggestion.
Well, you're asking if they want to speak on the phone. Does that suggest it's an actionable, immediately actionable item?
So for during the school day, it's going to go to their counselor that's assigned to them within the school day. If it is after school hours, we didn't want to put all of that on our counselors and that's why we would recommend contacting the suicide hotline.
But during school hours, is it actionable?
It'll go, yes. So the, the counselor should be able to take action on that, go get that kid. It'll immediately notify them.
Okay. Because that's a red light.
Yes, yes.
Is there any data on the kids that have subscribed or signed up? We're, we're just not getting a lot of data from them. Is there anything that says, hey, we've got a lot of data from these kids, but there's a few over here that just, they're just not inputting? And is there a way to encourage them to do so?
So yes, one of the things is, is them seeing the value of what that brings. And so the more that, you know, as we're building this platform, there, we have identified teachers that have found value in different pieces of it.
Okay.
And so they're able to, to work with their students and encourage them to use it. Some campuses have really latched onto the leadership attributes and they've had every one of their students go through and identify leadership attributes. They're working on and setting goals within leadership attributes. And so that's providing more and more information to the system.
What age group is the most active? Or is that data that you even have?
Um, I, so activities and opportunities, I would say that's going to be more of your secondary. There's more activities and opportunities that are available to them than, than we have at our, at elementary. However, I see a lot more interaction going on at the elementary with going in and informing the system.
Super. Thank you.
Yeah, they lift about 85%, 84% of the students participating in that. That's very challenging.
Yes.
You talk about 33,000.
Yes, it is.
It's all automated, right?
It's right. It's right.
Kara.
You guys are doing a great job.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that.
I think one quote that I read recently, I've forgotten where I saw it, but it's a quote that you made, that we want students to enjoy learning. And I think it was regarding Iowa, wasn't it?
Yes.
Good job. This is fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Great report. Next item on the agenda is under business. It's an action item to review and approve the investment policy, CDA. Mr. Poppy, don't take it out on me that Mr. Prado set me up a while ago because, you know.
President Everett, I would, that thought never crossed my mind. But good evening, President Everett, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Dr. Rivera. As part of our CDA policy on other revenues or investment policy, one of the stipulations is that the Board of Trustees review this policy on an annual basis. So tonight we bring you that policy. We have also had Scott McIntyre from Hill's Top Securities who the district contracts with and does our quarterly reports. He was here a couple of months ago. And they have both, his recommendation is because there was no law change from the last session in 2021, his recommendation is that the district does not need to make any changes to policy CDA local. And with that, the administration concurs and provides the same recommendation to the Board of Trustees as well. Approve the recommendation from Hilltop on our policy.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Seward and a second by Mr. Carbo to approve the investment policy CDA as recommended by Hilltop. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item is an action item regarding the 2021 Annual Financial Management Report. Mr. Poppy?
Yeah, every year, the school districts are required to report to the Board of Trustees in the community, the school first. Tonight, as part of that is called the Financial Management Report. Tonight, we have this report for you along with the 20 questions, 17 of which actually give points. Three of them are no longer points. While they did not delete those questions, I'll never know, but they still have them in the, in the questions that we'll, we'll go over. Again, this is the 2022 rating, but it's the 2021 school year with this one small exception of the superintendent contract, and that is the current contract that is in effect as of the date of this hearing. So even though it's the 2021, it's Dr. Rivera's contract and not Dr. Verlens because he was superintendent back then. It's the contract in effect today. So we have a brief presentation. I'll just kind of go through the process. You know, every, every district receives an accountability rating on the academic side. This is the TA's or the legislator's philosophy or, or attempt to give districts a financial accountability. So we have a rating. Came out in 1999. It's been amended a few times, but the primary goal is to improve the management of school districts' financial resources. We assess the quality of the, of the financial management of Texas Public Schools. It's very important. It's their taxpayer dollars. Give the chance to evaluate the quality of the financial management decisions that are being made and then openly report, openly report these to the public. So the Financial Management Report, which there are two copies over in, available for public over with, with Ms. Laura and the public, Chief Public Information Officer. I know I just messed that title up, but Laura has it, but it has a copy of the current superintendent contract as mentioned. It has the superintendent board reimbursements, outside compensation to superintendent, the gifts received by the executive officers and board members, and then business transactions between district and board members. Just clarify that there were none of those individuals of gifts or anything between the board or, or the executive officers reported, but they are in the, in the Financial Management Report for the community. So like our academic rating, the financial rating is very similar, 90 to 100 is an A, 80 to 89 is a B, 70 to 79 is a C, anything below 70 is a substandard achievement. If you fail or do not provide a response to any questions, one, two, and three, you automatically fail. Question four, if you do not pass that question, the max you can get is a 95. Same thing on question six, and the max you can get is an, is an 80, 89, and question 16, 17, and so forth. None of these apply to us. We are above the line, so I'm not going to spend a ton of time on any of those particulars. But we will jump right into the, the specific questions. The first three questions that can basically provide you to get a substandard achievement if you answer no on any of these. And remember, these questions are designed to get a yes response. So they're kind of word, a little unique, but. So first, yes, the financial audit, the, the annual financial report or the audit was submitted TA timely. The district did receive an unmodified opinion on the annual financial report. And the school district was in, in compliance with all payment terms of all debt agreements for the fiscal year. And the school district was in compliance with making payments to the TRS, the IRS, and the Texas Work, Workforce Commission. Question five, still in there, like I said, it's no longer being scored, but it's there. Question six, was the average change in assigned or unassigned fund balance over three years? Basically, you want to know, is your fund balance going down? Has it gone down more than 25%? If that's the case, you're in trouble. Or if you still have 75 days or two and a half months of, of fund balance, then you're in good shape. Because there are specific times where we have a fund balance where we do go down because we have saved up fund balance to build up to do some, some specific projects. And so they do give you that caveat. As long as you have 75 days, you're, you're in good shape. They ask you what a number of days cash on hand, current investments. Yes, we got full award for that question. We have 10 points. Was the measure of current assets to current liabilities sufficient to cover all of our short-term debt? Yes, it was. We received maximum points. And then did the school district's general fund revenues equal or exceed expenditures? And it gives you some exclusions, et cetera, but yes, we received all full 10 points on that question. Question 10, this indicator is no longer being scored and that they used to compare, you know, did you have a variance compared your budget revenues to your actual revenues? It's just, how good can you guess in your budget? But then that kind of takes away your budget. It's a living document, right? We do amendments. We do them all the time. So that, they have no longer score that question. Question 11, was the ratio of long-term liabilities to total assets for the school district sufficient to support? Yes, we went, this is the last year, if you recall, our score last year was a 96. We got eight out of 10 on this question last year. We got 10, or 19, 20. Now on this question, we received full points, 10 out of 10 points. Question 12, this is the only question, we did not receive full points, but we did receive the same number of points as the year prior. And this is, was the debt per 100 of assessed property value ratio sufficient to support future debt repayments? We received eight out of 10. Basically, what they do is they take the total revenue that you receive in your debt service fund, or they take your local revenue and they divide it by your total revenue. For us, that's 0.73. They look at your long-term, long-term liabilities. It's about 850 million. Multiply 0.73 times 850 million, multiply it by 100, divide by your property value, 10.2 billion, and it gives you a number of 6.08. So if you're between four and seven, you get eight points. If you're less than four, you'd receive full 10 points. So our values are going up, our debt is going down. I do not, I don't know what our score will be on this exact one next year, but going forward, I fully expect us to start beginning to receive 10 full points on that question. Question 13, was the school district's administrative cost ratio equal to or less than the threshold? Yes, we receive full points on that. Kudos to the administration of the board, particularly on this one. 14, did the school district not have a 15% decline in the student to staff ratio? Basically, I just want to know, are you adding more staff and your student either declining or bringing the same? And we're not, we are, we've met all, all points on that, so we're not falling into that category. And there was a school district's average daily attendance within the allotted range of the districts. They don't even keep track of that one anymore. Every two years, the district goes in and lets them know what our population, what we estimate it to be. And that's what the school district, that's what this TA funds us on. It gives us those monies as cash flow. At the end of the year, they do a settle-up process, but they're no longer recording that. Question 16, was our PIM submission close to the annual financial or within 3% of our annual financial report? Yes, we met that requirement. Question 17, did the exterior independent auditor report that the annual financial report was free of any instances of material weaknesses? Yes, that was the case. And question 18, did the external auditor indicate the annual financial report was free of any instance of material noncompliance for grants, contracts, and laws relating to local, state, or federal funds? Yes, we received full points on that question. And then question 19, did the school district post the required financial information on its website in recordings with all the government codes? Yes, we did. And then question 20, did the school board members discuss the district's property values at a board meeting within 120 days before the district adopted its budget? Yes, I know we've done that because we've discussed that at least four or five times every year. So with that being said, again, we received, for 20 years in a row, we received the highest score, a superior rating. There's that one year where you either passed or failed based on, they were making some changes, but we've always got the highest rating that we are eligible to get. And we received 98 out of a possible 100 points. If there are any questions, I know that we do have a public hearing next, so if there's any questions on the public, I'll be more happy to answer those questions as well.
Anybody have any questions or?
I think Mr. Prado's got a challenge. You've got to get it up two more points.
I tried, man, I tried.
Okay, Mr. Poppy indicated that we do have to conduct a public hearing. So at this time, we'll close the regular meeting and we will open the public hearing on the 2022 Financial Management Report. Does anyone wish to address this board regarding that in the public hearing? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and reopen our regular meeting.
Mr. President? Oh, you're, you can.
Go ahead.
Move to approve the financial report. So do we need to do that?
I don't think we.
Okay.
We need to do it. Next item on the agenda is action item number four. It's to amend the 2022, 23 budget. Mr. Poppy?
Good evening, members of the board. We do have one budget amendment this evening in the amount of $1.1 million. We're asking you to approve, amend the budget to approve some projects. Just going through real briefly, the AC, air conditioning units below the tower for all of our backup recovery systems are at their end of life, not even useful, but end of life. So we are asking to approve that, that project. We're also approving to build a storage building at the Lawson property to help with the district as our transportation needs continue to grow. Some, on the facility side, could be taken off of that property and stored over at the Lawson property. Do some renovation at West Mesquite High School, art rooms in the ROTC, and then also the B Center renovation on the first floor. We did the second floor a couple of years ago, but due to some growth, the first floor is now being used and needs, needs a lot of upgrading. Vance Middle School cafeteria, I don't know if you, how familiar you are with each of our campuses, but that cafeteria is unique and of itself. It has the walkway like right through the middle of the cafeteria. And the other middle schools have them on the sides. And so we're looking to make a match and be similar to maximize the use of that space at Vance Middle School. And then the Handby Stadium elevator, as you recall, we did a budget amendment approximately January or February of last year for 300,000. We have spent 130,000 of that, hit some snags, and now they're coming back and they're going to finish it till this year. Will that money roll to fund balance, 170,000 of it? So now we're asking to do amendment to take that 170 out of fund balance, move it back. So Mr. Owens has the money is to finish that project.
We have a motion by Mr. Carbo and a second by Mr. Rose to amend the 2022, 23 budget. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Board, I don't know with no other items on the agenda. Anybody have anything to add? Dr. Rivera?
Okay.
I'm not adding action item, but anything for discussion. Mr. Prado, welcome again to our district. We're happy to have you. We're, we hate to see Mr. Poppy go, but we wish him well. So welcome to Mesquite ISD. This meeting is adjourned.